I think it's time to try to involve the community within our competition. Okay, what we have for soldiers. Well, um. This year, four to seven April is when we're gonna host what is what is known as our state best player competition. Some of the tasks there that we that our soldiers will be given it's a parents board interview. They have to get dressed uniform, they get inspected by some of the senior leaders. Have throughout our command, they conduct an army combat fitness test, weapons qualifications, day and night land navigation, which is done on the north side of Camp Dodge. They have basic wear tasks that are conducted them like a solid objective thing of that nature. There's also a medical skills testing that we do there. We have a facility called the Mystic. Um, so they will get the council up there, so you guys can get in some of the highest technology medical symptoms. Training they can get. And then they conclude it with a twelve mile ruck march, they carry about a forty pound ruck. Twelve miles, it's a time event, they have to do it in three hours or less. The winners of the state competition. Will end up going to a regional best player competition. Where we partner with six other states with it's known as region four. Uh, for the National Guard, uh, that states, uh, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, that that region. Uh, this year, the competition has been held two to six May, and we are hosting competition right here on Camp Dodge. Um, help showcase, uh, our facility. The regional, a lot of the, a lot of the actual tasks are relatively the same. We add complexities to them, to make it a little different. Um, that we do, uh, also add to different types of tasks that stress the soldier. More like urban operations. Um, and usually we tie tie in some water survival training. The winners of the regional end up going to what is called the national best player competition. Where the seven different regions. Will, uh, send their soldiers to the central locations somewhere in the United States. Um, and then they'll compete at the national level to find out who are the two, the single best soldier and non-commissioned officer in the entire country. Um, for that year. In two thousand twenty seven, Iowa will be hosting its very first national best player competition, which will bring all of that right here to Johnston and Camp Dodge, Iowa, so a pretty unique opportunity for us. Uh, we've never done it before. Uh, I don't even know if we've ever hosted a regional one, so we're, we're hitting two big buttons with this. This is a slide, it kind of depicts what, uh, what we expect to come into the local community. Um, as far as support, um, also in any competition like this where you have, uh, you know, you're trying to identify the greatest soldiers or non-commissioned officer, you have, their leadership wants to come. The leadership doesn't stay on post, right? They're gonna stay in town somewhere and be a part of, part of Johnson's facilities, whether it's hotels, restaurants. Uh, but we will be bringing in, at a state competition, we bring in about a hundred to a hundred and fifty people, um, as support. Um, as well as command team will be supporting the local community. Uh, the regional competition, we can expect anywhere from fifty to a hundred additional people on top of that coming in from different states. Uh, and then in national best player competition in two thousand point seven, not only do we anticipate nearly five hundred people coming in from outside the state. Um, but it's also something that we're gonna have to have venue within the city of Johnston to help support it. Uh, from a hotel convention center type thing, it is, I went to my very first one as a leader this year in Alaska. It was absolutely amazing and I couldn't believe the amount of people that sponsored what they brought in. To spend money and support the local community, so it was really an opportunity for me. What I'm here to discuss or I guess pitch to you guys is how we can tie Johnston not only into our, uh, into the national one coming in a few years, but how we can take advantage of maybe some partnering on different things. Uh, with just our state one that we run every year, but as well as our regional one coming up this year. You know, things that I'll be asking, maybe putting up signs along some of your roadways, um, that lead to Camp Dodge. Um, kind of highlighting, hey, we've got this competition taking place. Um, how we advertise, and we've talked about, you know, uh, buying Jackie into this. Uh, and advertising to have, you know, inviting the community to actually come and watch some of the events, whether that's on Camp Dodge. Or if, uh, we can some of it within Johnson's state limits, I would prefer that even. If I was more than a year. Uh, I think America brought up the ceremony out here possibly. But I think that would be a great opportunity, uh, and then maybe using the park for a picnic. Doing our, our army combat fitness tests somewhere within the community as well. Uh, you know, from a support aspect, you know, it's really, you know, talking with the chief. I think they can tie in really closely with us. Um, from a safety standpoint of if we're gonna rub through your streets, we're on your sidewalks, uh, you know, what kind of fire department would like to help with some of our water survival skills. Um, on the river, on the creek or something, there, there's many ways that we can approach that. Uh, and come up with some good ideas where they can get training out of it as well as us, uh, to support the local community as well, so. That is really my presentation for the evening. I guess, are there any questions?
Before we get to questions, I just want to congratulate you first for being selected. For all competitions, both the national competition, that's a big deal.
Yes, sir.
That, that speaks very well of what, what Camp Dodge does and has to offer, so congratulations on that. Um, thank you for sharing this information with us and presenting opportunities to work with the Ohio National Guard on both of these events. I personally think this creates a wonderful opportunity for our residents who have become more familiar with what goes on at Camp Dodge. Start out by asking a question, are, are those of us at the diocese here familiar with Camp Dodge? And I can assure you, people are, but there, there are probably some people in our community that know what it sounds like, but they aren't quite sure what it does. So this all, it's a really great opportunity in a fun way.
Yes.
For people to see what's, uh, what Camp Dodge is all about, so, thank you. Council questions, comments?
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it, everybody, it's a really good, great information, and we're next to it. Camp Dodge, wait for it, every day, fighting, you know, controls, and I wake up. And that one.
I apologize, that's probably not Jenny.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, I really know that you try to bring the whole thing, we, and national, to our city. I think that was the first thing, national, and that, so that'd be great for us to think. Just a quick question, yes, this thing's up here. Say, we see the competition in port seven, April, or? That happened already, or the next?
Next year, sir.
Oh, twenty four, four to seven.
Twenty four, yes.
Okay, and the next one going to six May?
That's twenty twenty four, so we run the state competition in April and immediately following will be the regional one. Um, in twenty twenty four. This, the national one is the one we started planning for now to take place in twenty twenty seven.
Okay, so for the national, what can we do?
We don't have facilities large enough on Camp Dodge to host like a, it's only because everybody shows up on the final, uh, I guess, the award ceremony and stuff, it brings in sponsors from all over like Oakley and tactical fitters. Let's say, uh, we don't have anything that you can do like a formal banquet and award ceremony there at Camp Dodge. And they highly encourage that in the community, regardless of the area that you're in, to help tie that, bring that into the competition.
Fantastic. That's what I think that we have up here right here, block, block down the block.
Yes, sir, I think it showcases the city, have the action, the military farewells.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I would just, well, I think I could echo what both the very, the council person. Or Camp Dodge is such an important part of our community, and I was, uh, earlier in the summer, uh, both Mike and I were out in Washington. West Senator John Ehr, and talking about some different projects that had gone on in the city. And it's, it's amazing to have a senator who spends so much time in the city of Johnston to rehearse service with. And so it was, it was really, that was a really special thing, so that's one of the, and I worked on this in Capitol, legislators who don't, don't, they, they represent different parts of the state, but they're very familiar with Johnston because of their service in Camp Dodge, so Camp Dodge is such a place, and it, and not only that, but in all the, it's a complex thing that happens, really, like we were talking about with the medical stuff. It's, it is, and obviously, some of that stuff, it's really the same line everybody knows about, but at the same time, it's also some stuff that I think it's great that welcome. How important it is to kind of start. Cause I think it's important for, for part recording efforts to get more. Including National Guard is part of their, 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 so, and we really appreciate it, and the camp, uh, really appreciate the mission. Partner, including the school, which is something that is important, both, and they can be important partners.
I again stress, uh, my echo of, of everything said before, that twenty twenty seven, uh, national event. I, I, I can kind of follow a calendar as far as that goes, and so we'd anticipate sometime if, if everything else holds in that year after May. But is there kind of envisioning as to what time of year the, the national competition usually opens?
Yes, sir, historically, it's done in July timeframe, so the winners of the national level come together and build what's called a best squad, and then it will compete against all army, uh, best squads from around the world. Um, that I have told, they should be earlier in.
Okay.
If, right now, they currently do it, um, within the August, September timeframe, and try it, tried it by a, associated United States Army Conference Ceremony, I think, yeah. They're supposedly gonna ship that off of that, so I can tell you, right now, it's penciled in for July of twenty point seven, but it can ship as early as, probably be in, in May of twenty twenty. Since it's a feeder competition.
Everything has to back, yep.
Sure. With what the army does.
Thank you, this is, this is exciting, the partnership that you're, uh, trying to propose, I think, is the first step.
Uh, I agree with everything that's been said here about how it sounds like a fun and great opportunity for the city and for, uh, residents to, you know, get a glimpse of, of activities. Um, my son went, was fourteen or thirteen or whatever, was the first time he did a triathlon down at Graves Lake. And that, before that time, I never considered, spent much time thinking about it. The reason I'm telling you this story is they also had that, uh, triathlon at a age group for little kids, like six-year-olds. It was the funniest thing I've ever seen, especially watching the parents who were fenced off behind a rope, you know, trying to encourage their kids. And I would say to you, um, it would be kind of, and I don't know what it would take, but wouldn't it be fun if there was sort of an event for, uh, you know, twelve-year-old or something to, to sort of set up a, 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 a challenge for them to? And then they get excited about when the regionals and the nationals come, or maybe it's too late for the regionals, but. So I just, it's a thought that went through my mind, that get them young. Uh, and the parents, you get, you get a good, you get a really good event. And then my other question is, I'm assuming there are age divisions for, uh, this warrior, uh, competition?
Uh, no ma'am, there's just two competitions, one is for soldiers, so it's, it's, uh, rank specialist or below, so, uh, pay grade of one to four. In one set, the other set are non-commissioned officers, um, and that's E-five sergeants up to sergeant first class, sevens. Those are the only two different groups. A forty-year-old sergeant first class. Or a twenty-one-year-old five sergeant.
And men and women too are mixed up then?
Okay. Valiant and separate company will send whoever they choose within their formation, they conduct their own, uh, competition at their own location before they send them to that constant camp.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Look forward to working with you. Next item on the agenda is the library annual report for this year twenty twenty.
And, um, thank you for having me, my name is Katie, I'm the current library board president, I'm the, our interim library director, so thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Uh, we always appreciate support of the council and of course Brian for coming to all of our meetings. I'm gonna hit just some of the top highlights from our annual report. Um, first off, condition of the libraries, our libraries are in twenty-two years old, which all the board members are, you know, it's kind of shocking, we got old that fast. But we have a couple of repairs associated with the age building, a new group in parking lot are planned. There are also some planned repairs to the exterior of the building. Our other condition changes, we have expanded our outdoor wifi with some of the developments that have been happening around the building. And recently, from the library foundation, have a collection of outdoor instruments, so these are for kids, they're over kind of by the staff entrance of the library, and they've gotten a lot of use, and they've been a lot of fun. Um, going on to circulation, our circulation has continued to rebound after twenty twenty, when we saw that sharp dip, we're back over, um, uh, thirty thousand. Uh, or I'm sorry, three hundred and five thousand, which is fantastic. Our physical items continue to be, um, maintained and updated by the library staff. If you, uh, I'm on page two of our report, uh, books continue to be the largest category of items at the library, followed by magazines that have got, uh, lots of other multi items that are popular as well. Or circulation, our overdrive circulation, so our digital materials continues to remain steady. We had a surge in that category during the pandemic, and it's remained popular with all of our patrons. Um, so if we compare our overdrive digital circulation to our physical circulation, we're at fifty thousand on overdrive and a two hundred and forty-four thousand on our physical items. Uh, some of our programming highlights from the past year, um, all was our summer reading program, um, it's popular this year, it was summer discovery. So we had a hundred and sixty library cards to kids zero to fourteen, or twenty-three thousand digital materials, and we offered over sixty-five literary literacy-based programs to children of their families. We also have programming, um, for adults and other members of the community, we had our first read local author fair, um, this past February, two twenty-five local authors who participated, that was a popular event. Our programming, um, we have the most attendance with our children's programs, we had about six hundred attendants for children's programming. Uh, this past year, teen programming, we've been keeping high, almost four thousand in that category. Not our typical library services, our notary services, helpful, we also have a learning tools collection, which are, um, also, you know, uh, we have tech items, crafting items, uh, which is kind of fun to check out from the library. Might we should also highlight, we are currently working with a search term to hire our next director, we're hoping to have that, um, starting role for, uh, this spring. We also have a website, uh, that's active the next couple of months, we're switching from our old platform to something plus, so we'll look more like the rest of the site after that change. So with that, I'm happy to answer the question, but again, I appreciate the support of the area council.
Questions?
Thank you for showing up this. The last time I remember that, for, for, um, I think, second line.
Well, I will probably call it before it goes on our. And about eight, uh, fourteen people. At the attendance, um, that. Prefer to come for a treat, and then on the, of our, let's talk. Try to forget where the genetics. Uh, and that's been really steady, that's what I've gone to. And that, uh, six, twenty, and that really steady with about two, um, ten, uh, uh, five to six hours.
I know that the left reach looks so much. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, um. Rossi, which is the representative. I, uh, also advertise a lot of it, that we're, found, different, uh, it's just some people, like, your friends or, uh.
Here, I don't, I don't have a question, but I, I do want to make a comment, first of all, Katie, thank you very much for the presentation, and, and I, I want to make sure we go on record, uh, Molly, you're doing an outstanding job, and it was so great to be able to have, uh, kind of a step in, and, and not only step in, but, but to continue, that's for, excellent job. I know even we had all hoped that the search process started a little faster, so we can get you back to your regular scheduled programs, uh, but in the meantime, you're doing an outstanding job, and I appreciate your mission.
I, I want to extend my thanks to both of you. Back to the work and to the staff, who are all smart. I, I didn't frequent the library much, I'm tired, and now I'm there all the time, books, never aged old to me. And every time I go there, regardless of the day, or the time of day, that part's about as small, there is just so much activity going on in that library. So richly to our.
I just had a, a real quick question, um, and, and as well, I really appreciate everything the library does, I'm a huge fan of your library alone, I, you know, if I'm looking for a book, and that's the library doesn't have it, it, you know. So, I love that, um, the, the local author, author fair, which was really cool as well, are you planning to do that again in twenty twenty four?
That was really well received, so we're hoping that will be. Fun event, uh, we got a lot of positive feedback from local authors, uh, but also from the people. Um, I wasn't sure if it was just, I don't think it's like, but really, a lot of people came to discover what their, uh, co-. So that was certainly a fun event.
You want to hear your results, you can let me know. Uh, a book about buses, you know, art, bring the bus out, right? I just, I just love that, that's just, uh, yeah. I also really enjoy your classes, where it's, you know. You know, the great presenters, you know. Kind of, that's, you know, so, so keep that up.
I will take that up now, if those are going anywhere, those are super popular, yeah, we're, we're super blessed to have a great staff that, um, done something.
Any other questions? One remaining item on the agenda, and that is the seat of Johnson's five staffing plan.
We're all hungry now, talk about food, bear. Or, yeah, our cookies are. Mike, is this where I'm supposed to start up right on everybody, this is really great. Back down. Yeah, we're gonna spend five minutes on everything. Had brought some snacks. I thank you very council, tonight I'm gonna, our five-year staffing plan is for all, where this was one of the strategic plan items that was identified, uh, that, you know, certain plan of last fall. Uh, I really want to take a moment and thank staff, uh, for, for, Swisher, uh, but all the staff for putting putting on a thought, this document, uh, document, without their hard work, and I do appreciate the work they put into it. Uh, so, as we walk through it, first focused on the question of, of what is, what is our appropriate staffing? And it was the model that, uh, some metro, something, create, uh, to your walking, Oak City, it's a very similar model. Um, it's observing, uh, metro, and cities that are five smaller, and five larger, to Johnson's, so, so thirteen, uh, communities, metro, respond, and, uh, and of those thirteen uh, what we see out of, who wants to respond, excluded five of them from our results, and two of the particular bond or, and, and grimes were excluded. Not have a police department, I think they'll exclude, uh, fire department, uh, fire department, uh, so they'll have staff in, in their heights, people may lie on a number of contract positions. We also exclude people from group, uh, as an outlier, part of, have more staff, uh, and a lot of that's written in telecom and electrical tools, so excluded those, of the remaining average was six point five six, uh, per thousand population, uh, so, show in relationships, city Johnson's six point four, so a little bit low average, but not, uh, way out of the realm from that. Uh, then comparable cities, I get that, cities five, or five smaller to the city Johnson throughout Iowa, uh, taking at the range of four nine seven, uh, to ten point nine, averaging eight point five, or eight point zero five, uh, per thousand. Uh, so again, Johnston, that range for most of those, uh, ten. Four, ten, eleven include Johnston. So overall, there's twenty two cities to look at. Just looking at all twenty two. See, I have seven one six. Excluding outliers, talk about seventy. Seven point five compared to six point three oh Johnson. So say that that is an average. Certain. I. Like Johnson's, I think that's what part. See what is the average. Seven point five to our population. For positions of the average. We also looked at our growth over the next five years. Projection three. Department to conservative. Testament to. Percent. Project in our population twelve thousand eight sixty five compared to our current population projection twenty five thousand. Seven sixty two, so it's a growth of three thousand one hundred and two. Individuals, so that we then equate out to an additional twenty three. Should turn forty four. For a total of sixty seven point seven. Just to reach our average at the end of the five year staffing. Does that make sense? I think what we say is it's pretty obvious that we're gonna add that positions. Scope. Five year horizon, but certainly we have to look forward. As as they put this together, they realize that. It's a long, it's a short game to reach that, that's put this together. Look at that, recognize the staff that this is a slow progress. Certain councils have to have some discussion about what are important. Staffing. So staff then after kind of developing. Ideal staffing level. Staff we're looking at kind of changing. Next five years. And that's where we looked at internally, what are some. Have. But then also looking at growths happen. What do we take? What part would take public. What are what are initial staffing? Provide services. So if you look at. Breakdown of the number of positions for the next five years. For Johnston, that was three. Staffing plan at all, there's forty five point five. Staffing plan itself. With the fire department, some of the allocated grimes. So it really adds out to that three nine point four. And this staying. Should you look at one or two years adding four point nine suggested. Have a high to twelve. A lot of that has to do with projections, fundamentally, what property growth is projected by. And that includes my back. Valuation years. So we really spent a lot of time trying to smooth out increases financially. Official have positions like public works. And a public works. To rights funds, those are property tax funds. That have packed. But our goal was to try to fight actually smooth that out. So. Were brought on. I think not pack. Additionally, then if you look at table. Breakdown of what. Are by department and see how that. That's how the total. Any questions on?
Mike, I do have a question, I want to go back just a little bit further. My math is not adding up to your math. We're presuming an average ratio of seven point five two employees per thousand. I I I take and I don't want to get into the meat of this, but I don't agree with that forty four point four. Positions down than we currently are from the average. Can you either walk me through that or perhaps just provide a memo or something of explanation at a later point in time? I I get a much, a much, but I get a lower amount than that.
So some of it has to come in how depends on probably what population.
I'm I'm using twenty five thousand seven hundred and sixty three stated at the bottom of page four. Okay, well, it's part of page two. Keep it up for. I I mean, it just may be something for us to review at a later.
We could, we could. Go back and look at it. Let me, let me go back.
That's fine, that's fine.
Any other questions? On either part of. Staff or kind of the average comparables.
Yes, so you kind of follow through the thirty nine point four. If you take that. Or to add thirty nine point four. Have population growth. But with that, that converts to one.
Well, it depends on what population, what number you want.
I think.
Number five. We we can work that out, right?
And then I think the other thing I would kind of interest. Looks like what? I was looking for metro cities. And I I think the metros are. Peers for us because. We all use, well, for the most part, we use DART. If you are a, whereas if you take a Cora bill. Or a Cedar Falls, they how they. Some of those services. So to. Our peers. I think the best way to draw a peer is to look at cities. That are a roughly the same size, so between ten thousand and ten thousand. Sort of almost sort of narrow down that peer category. So I would, I would be kind of interested. Five cities I kind of wrote down were Altoona, Clyde, Norwalk, Urbanale. And I can email this to you. Look at the Detroit Metropolitan cities that were not excluded because of the. Fire department, et cetera. Five cities that kind of fall into that population category are Altoona, Clyde, Norwalk, Urbanale and Milwaukee.
You'd send me that.
Sure.
One of the things I would argue was, I think there is some comparison. Look at on communities that are like size. Now, I certainly understand there's X factor. Have, for example, Coral, for example, they have a mall near fire department. So while they have a higher ratio, they even have less staff. So I think there is some, there is some comparison, especially with. Fire service, we we have to get it to understand the numbers. And and I think there is some likeness, there's probably, there's more likeness, I think, than.
Okay, I I guess just from my standpoint, I think that might be a way to to connect. Because obviously. That the key is sort of what's the starting point on per employee per thousand.
Yep.
I I I feel. Of those. Are similar in size to us, throw out the point, throw out. You know, towns that are that are significantly smaller than us. But those are anyway.
And and most of those cities, I think you rattled off, have their.
Yeah, they're all listed at the. In your table, yeah, that's, that's where I. And I can sit afterwards on that. Just writing.
Any other questions on? So if you look at, I think. Kind of tell. Challenge. I think there's a number of things to really keep in mind. We looked at, first of all, this does not include class compensation. That the current working on, so impacts from that. You don't have that. None of that is back into. P F, go ahead. Oh, I thought you had a question, sorry. Additionally, PFM has rather conservative. Property tax growth. That's just kind of what's in their model. So certainly add. Property tax. Impacts are higher, so we'll have more flexibility. Actually, it's pretty conservative numbers on stamp, traditional plan, which are most expensive. Each of saying, single plan at the same city. From a benefits perspective, or kind of a worst case scenario. But then on the same token. Are in all these models. An entry point for. Higher, we have to be higher above that or have lateral transfer procedures. That would be more expensive. So the demonstrate, additionally, this does not, it's only. Benefits, this does not include. Like, we have to outfit a police officer, send someone to a academy. We have to buy a truck or car because they add more officer costs. So those costs are not reflected. So initial costs in that. So as you look at this table, see, will it show what the. Raw cost of adding positions. Look at. Left side of tables. This side of the table will show what the impact is current staffing. Add. For current staff based on projections for property. What that will, so you can see. Six, two point seven. We're looking at twenty five cent increase for what is status quo. So earlier when I talked about how staff. Really because of that, that. We really spent some time trying to value. Positions. Come on. Charge fine. Comms, well, it's. Project. Well, those positions got pushed now, project. By, I think, shall library, actually. Some of the library, looking at staffing. Company libraries. Staffing we have on library inside. And really felt that based on that. Also. Seven. Not. That or. So then this middle section, see, based on staffing and what's proposed. What letting impact on which are. And then this is kind of the bottom line. What seat you're after. So through the first five years of this. So. Our. Overall fiscal impact. A dollar six. Should the council. So just to fund the mission as. It's a dollar six. We then took and said, okay, what if. Right. Staffing. So we look at. Creep signal, so twenty, it's going to be twenty five. Six, we're reading it from one percent to two percent. It's going to be twenty seven, four percent. We kept it at four percent, it's greater to. It's called twenty nine, five percent. So based on all that, you can see, this is what our level of increase would be based on just franchise fee changes. Bring up positions. Pack. By staff. In all, using that sort of franchise fee, that's an increase of a dollar seventeen point five. Horizon staffing. We know that that's, that's a quite tall order. That would take us to the highest. Staff did also kind of take a look at. Public safety. Public safety. One of our key services providing. So what if we. Public. Now I would see cautious about that route. Department has. Add population. Control resources of our departments, but just taking that instead of. Of the forty five position. City of Johnston. Firefighters, there's twenty point two public safety positions. Ten point five. Fire. Even with that, it did not increase the franchise fee. Creates a dollar twenty five. The funds prediction that's the highest rate per count. Franchise fee that's fifty seven percent increase. At highest. That would be behind. So certainly, just the public safety positions. Back. Look at the math. Based on. Or parts comments. Staff. You know, it's funny. Public safety, so we're still kind of falling behind. And that's not even talking about. So the overall staffing plan has thirty nine point four. Just the public safety, just over twenty. But the additional.
Twenty point four two number.
Yes.
So the two numbers are thirty nine point four and twenty four.
Right.
I I thought I heard a twenty three.
Well, twenty, twenty three point three. Just the growth in our population, that's not accounting for. We're behind. Just the natural growth, three thousand. Population. With twenty three point three. Ask Brian has to calculate.
Mike, you and I have always disagreed on that, so.
Okay, fine, we're here the math major, so.
Added the twenty three. That's based upon keeping that. Trying to figure out how you calculate twenty three.
Seven point five. So. Three point one zero two times. Seven point five two. It's twenty three point three. So that, that is just. Actual staff. On adding three thousand. Residents over the five year horizon staff.
To. Calculate.
That's just, that's the number of staff.
Right, so I'm just trying to. Like, in some ways, it's all sort of like two different approaches for figuring out how many staff.
Thirty nine point four is the number of positions that are.
Yeah, so in essence, that's basically sort of saying, here's what. Number of staff in each department is to do their job.
Correct.
Irrespective of population growth or ratios or anything.
Yep.
So that's, that's one way to calculate. And then another way to calculate is to say today. We want to shoot for an objective of. And then another way to calculate is to say today, we want to shoot for an objective of seven point five two. Per thousand.
Yep.
And if. Row with that. Get to seven point five two per thousand, we're not at that number today.
Yeah.
Sub six something. Got to seven point five two row, that is using sort of a per popular, not, not based on what's. Are to kind of do the job.
Yep.
That's twenty three, so that, that's what I, when I say two different ways to calculate.
Yep.
One is based upon what kind of. Will be like. In order for us to do a good job of the library, the police department, fire department, et cetera, we need thirty nine point four.
Correct.
Or another, a row based upon. Population and kind of an objective, shooting for seven point five two, that's twenty.
Well, if you, if you're seven point two, there's kind of two components, you have the number of positions behind already. Because we're not at, at seven point two, we're at six point three.
Seven point five. Yeah, it's seven point five two.
Correct.
If you're going to get two.
Yeah, so if. What we're saying. Our averages should be seven point five. Today, we're at six point three, so you have a deficit.
Right.
Number. I believe it's forty four point four, we'll go back.
Okay, okay, okay.
So you have the forty four point four, plus you have the growth.
Twenty three, so that's really sixty seven. Two comparisons, sixty seven. Sorry.
We're, we're, we are suggesting thirty nine. There's no way we're. And understanding, we understand that forty position.
Thanks, that's helpful to kind of.
Other questions?
Is this the end of your presentation?
Yep, I'm happy to answer.
Had a couple.
Yeah.
When we're talking about adding another clerk, and we're also the administrative city for the fire department. The clerk, are you taking. Into account that extra work of manning. Now combined group of the administrative city.
So a little bit, yes, and so clerk, for example, map condition. Are working at how shifting responsibilities take with city. She does, and knowing that there's going to be some additional HR function. Shifting clerk off of city.
Right.
So that she can pretty much devote her time to HR functions.
I saw that there was an HR person also.
It's, it's off, you know, I think part of it is, I think there's a couple of positions. Judging that of what the priority. Metro, a community grid. Hours. Not have IT staff. And so I think we're, we're kind of balancing of IT, the first priority, chart, first priority. Right now, the staffing plan is all IT, high HR, but both of those positions are down the road. Closer to that. Out that. One of them.
I just a comment. You guys were here talking about the seven point two and the six point seven, and how many, and how we compare to other cities, et cetera, et cetera. And when, when Teresa tells me, she's working every weekend. On, on. Reports and. You know, think that we pass for in terms of. What's the future going to be, what, where should we position, et cetera, and that to me is where I. Start thinking about the fact that we need to hire people, and when Molly is here talking about the entire library staff, I guess it wasn't Molly. That the library staff is tired, they were, they're just flat out working all the time, they're short staffed and they're tired. And so those things to me resonate more than how we compare to other cities. And actually, the fact that we're a little bit less in terms of staffing. Then they. Comparables, well, we rely a little bit on other cities, right? Our police have a memorandum. Share some things, and that only makes sense that we share some things. This is just a comment. I appreciate everything that, that the staffing, the staffing report gave us, and I think we did a great job. But in the end, I want to look at our, our actual people here that are doing the work. And then I also want to listen to the people that in the city, the residents, and, and understand how they feel we are doing. And that's going to be the thing that resonates most with you when we discuss hiring going on.
So, and I think that's a great, great point, and so in some ways. It's sort of tempting. Right, I mean, is that fair to say?
Well, and prepare us for the future.
Right.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
We need to know, we five year plan, this is what we think we're going to need, we need to fill that in and realize that when we're going to do a new project. We have to make sure that we have the, you know, the budget set aside to pay.
So then I think, my, my next question will kind of. Have kind of this document, how, how. Like, see this. Some ways, almost like a CIP for staff, and then this is kind of the, the each year as we get ready to budget and look at, okay, decision package. Staff that this is the document drives it.
I think, I, I think you're, you're exactly right, I think one of the things that my options are, we've prioritized some projects. Before we prioritize kind of operational components of the city. And so I think this document tries to balance that to see how we operate. Sources we have to manage, the activities, you know, those are just important, I mean, take for example, Ignite. Ignite comes online, overall, there's six positions here that it staffed. So when we make a decision to. Have a great project like Ignite come on, online, there are operational impacts for staff, staff of. Provide, and so I think it's trying to balance that, but also recognizing what will happen. You know, our staff, they're incredible. They, I made comment during the charifying, I didn't really see, we're letting things go by the least time, but we're very reactive in my mind. And there are things that. Up there are trying to proactive, but if we're proactive, we shouldn't be in my mind, and we don't really have the time. There's countless other stuff that we cannot do. Try to put out each fire that's out, I think this is trying to recognize and say, there are, throughout the organization. I had a cabinet I worked with once, and he said, you know, I can keep someone working at a hundred and twenty percent for so long. Got a backup now that your staff's working at a hundred and twenty percent. For a long time. I. Backups. Now, we can bring it back up to a hundred and twenty percent for a while, but you know, that staff. Like. Citizen. Mike, I. I think, you know, it's important to know the numbers, the comparisons, some of them. Have that. Back our mind. Ultimately, the real value. Great work has been done. Real value is. At department scope, that I can apply with the star, protecting that out for five years. That. Some effort to show what the fiscal impact of that will be, what the rapid possible revenue sources. I think that's, that's very valuable to us, we've never had that before. On a year to year basis, we had proposals for. Staff in different areas. Now, and, and had to make decisions about those, those requests, and some grant, some don't, and we don't have to make a picture. How, how it fits in here. Staff. So I, I think this is, this is good information, it's very timely, we have a lot of work, start talking about budgets. So at least we have some, some idea of what, what, what staffing request is going to be, how that fits in. Longer range picture of what, what we see down the road, so I, I really. There's a couple of council members that have it, so I want to make sure that everybody has enough to ask questions. I said my comments.
Anything else?
So I, I think next step is what I would like is, if you have feedback, specific concern, or question, or comments, get those to staff. And then we'll bring it back to a future work session, we need to have some dialogue, or we'll probably bring it back to a regular council. And then just receive the plan, and we want to adopt the plan because it needs to be documented. Changes and added staffer that nothing's set in stone, it helps the budget, but it does give us a framework, and the council can, can take that piece of information. Budget, understand kind of requests of what we're. For your budget here. Thank you.
We go during the work session.